Let's call it in order. We didn't did a roll call and please leave everything in order. We need to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion we approve the agenda that's set forth in front of us?
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I second. Let's lay it on it. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Tanner.
Aye.
Mr. Barner.
Aye.
Chair, but uh, all right. I don't know how to guess speakers, I don't guess. We go into the consent items, approval of the meeting in the minute for the work session, the regular meeting, work session, and the call meeting on October the 10th and the 25th. I hear a motion on that.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the work session, October 10th, 2021. Regular meeting, October 10th, 2021. Work session of October 25th, 2021. And the call meeting, October 25th, 2021.
You can hear a second.
Second.
Let's lay it on it.
Little discussion?
Yeah, you don't want anything on it?
Yeah, I just got one question. Scott, was you going to the doctor on October 10th? Cause on page three, you said your ligament collapsed.
Really? Okay.
Top of the page.
All right.
Commissioner Pope asked if the amount of leases a ligament charged for that large, ain't it?
Okay.
I figured you had a doctor's appointment next day.
I must have, yeah.
What you trying to say?
That was the spell check going, going bad on me, I think.
That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you.
That correction.
Yeah, thank you.
Probably should have been legitimate. Anything else? Anything else, anybody? Lay it on. And we vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Tanner.
Aye.
Mr. Barner.
Aye.
Here votes are. All right. Agenda items. Resolution of the 2021-16 Public Transit Assistant Grant. Your DRT and the USDOT. Okay. Do you have anything? Make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to be set resolution 2021-16 Public Transit Assistant Grant.
Have a second.
I'll second.
Okay, have a motion and a second, any discussion on it?
It's like, let everybody knows no cost to the county, this service.
You said it wouldn't be no cost.
No cost to the county.
No cost to the county. Okay.
Scott, what does it cost? Say if I called and picked me up from Tampa, what, you want the cost of that thing? Do you have any idea?
Uh, I believe the average is around two to three dollars, I think, something like that. Just to cover some of the costs.
And this is for someone that has some type of handicap or something, I mean, it's not like...
Yeah, it's just someone that needs public transit that may not have a vehicle or can't drive or those kind of things. And there's folks who may need to go to work that, that work and they're not able to afford a vehicle at that time or something of that nature.
I think they also have something about, don't they have to be notified like 24 hours in advance?
They do, they have to call 24 hours in advance to set that up, yes sir.
Take care of the doctor visits and stuff like that?
Yes, sir.
If they call.
Grocery stores, uh, sometimes to the libraries, they need to go over there and those kind of thing. Yeah.
Okay. Any more on it? If not, let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Tanner.
Aye.
Mr. Barner.
Aye.
Chair votes are. Okay. This is B, Albany Avenue Overpass Concept, Concept Design. And uh, I hear a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to accept, uh, I guess the bid for the, is there a bid?
Just a proposal, yes.
Proposal for the practical design partners on the overpass project on Albany Avenue.
I second it.
Second, got a second. Any discussion on it? I feel like this is going.
I've got some, I just hope the city's gonna go in too with this, I mean...
Well, city manager notified me that they applied for those, uh, the government, uh, governor, excuse me, governor's fund, uh, the, the money that was put out, but they haven't heard anything back yet. And I believe that's to cover the cost and everything with the, with engineering and construction, but we don't know anything at this time. But also too, if that does not go through and not successful, if they're not successful in that, then we can use this preliminary engineering report to submit the DOT for information on the STIP so we can put it on our STIP program. Or any other funding that may be out there, even at the federal level.
So if this is preliminary, have you done any preliminary, um, study on where our funding will come from, since there is no money?
I have, but what I would suggest, we just take it out of the regional T-splice.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Is there a projection on the cost of an overpass for this?
Uh, at one time, a couple of years ago, when it was first looked at, they were looking at somewhere around three to three and a half million dollars. Yeah.
Sounds low.
It is sound low.
Yeah, probably, it's probably not low now, but at the time, it was just, it was a two-lane overpass.
Has anybody talked with like Coffee County or Jeff Davis County and them overpasses they built? What kind of files them has ran?
Yeah, and that's based on theirs, that's how some of these were calculated, was based on the current construction projects.
Okay. Okay. Anything else on it? I think that's one of the most needed things in Weycross, I believe what we need right now is that overpass. It'll, it'll help the city and the county, you know?
Especially now with, with CSX and the way they've changed their operation philosophy. With longer trains, uh, you know, backing up in the yard, all the crossings now seem to be blocked at, all through the day. So it's, it, you know, it's one of those things that was told to us, or told to me when I started with Ware County a few years ago, uh, from CSX, they basically said that it would be best for us to build overpasses over those trains because they knew that change was coming.
Right, yeah, yeah.
But you know, what's, what's really kind of ironic is that when CSX came and, you know, I'm a former employee of CSX and all that, but when the concept come about the double tracking, that was supposed to alleviate all this backing up. Oh, I mean, that was supposed, that's supposed to be the win-all situation. Hey, we get this double track and they gather the community, block streets and everything else. But now, I would say the problem is worse now than it was then because at least you just had one track you were dealing with. Now, and you got some of those trains, they're three miles long and, you know, and, and they stay, when they stop, it's not like five minutes, sometimes it's for hours.
Right.
And, uh, you know, it's inevitable something gonna happen where somebody boxed in, they can't get out and have some kind of emergency at five, five o'clock at the bed and, you know, so I, I think this is something that CSX really won't and maybe want to be a participant in trying to hear because we want to be good neighbors.
But we've been told that with the Savannah ports expanding and the amount of business that's gonna be, uh, generated out of that one port, whereas they're coming here to be broken and put back together, then there's gonna be a lot more train traffic. And it's hard to believe you can get more train traffic in Weycross than there is now.
Yeah.
I attended a number of meetings about removing the track from, on Plain Avenue, remember you used to cross Plain Avenue? And the railroad finally said, yeah, we'll double track, we'll double the number of trains and double the speed through town.
Yeah.
To move that track, so it's here.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we're gonna have to grow over them. We got a plan on overpass.
As long as it don't affect State Street Overpass Project.
No, I don't think it'll do that, you Scott.
No, sir, I, I, it might be that this is, this is probably gonna wind up being a local project more so because of the situation, but no, sir, I, I do not foresee that at all.
Well, what'll be on record is supporting, um, Christopher Barner that I'm fully, I'm, I'm looking forward to the city being part of it. Not the county footing the whole big.
All right, yes sir. And I think they will, but like I said, this is basically like to get the ball rolling. And once I think ball is rolling, then I think the city will participate in, uh, because like I said, it's gonna be a win-win for everyone. And, uh, so I, I really think that they will, you know?
In the past, Albany Avenue has lost a lot of businesses on account of that. And every time people out on that side of town, when the train come, especially at rush hours, they'll take off over the quarter of Z and then we'll have a wreck over there. Those people trying to get on the bypass road for it. But, uh, I think this will help us. Any more? Let's vote on it. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Tanner.
Aye.
Mr. Barner.
Aye.
Chair votes are. Okay. Okay, on this C, the bid award for Miracle League Ball Field. We don't know what that is, I wanna go ahead with that. And I hear a motion on that.
Chairman, I move that we, we award the contract to Sports Turf Company in the amount of $530,415 um, for the Miracle League field that's been discussed. Contingent upon the matching funds from the Miracle League organization. Memorandum of under, memorandums of understanding in all the league of work to be, um, generated and approved by our county attorney before any contracts are signed with anybody.
Okay. I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I can't vote on that, right?
I would think so.
Okay.
Chairman, just for clarification out, in your motion, Commissioner Pope, you state matching funds?
Whatever they're gonna put up, they're matching some of the funds, it's not equal, but they're supposed to bring in $375,000. You put that in then, in the, uh, minutes.
I will.
We just wanna make sure the money's there before we start signing contracts.
Right, I got you, I got you. And our money, we gonna, we can, our score is being...
Yes, sir, it's coming out of the, the ARPA money that was, uh, distributed by the federal government and we can use that, it's the, the match of what we, they're putting, to break it down for you, um, they're putting in seventy, basically, it's about seventy percent of the, of the project, we'll put in thirty percent.
All right. Any more discussion on it? Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Tanner.
Aye.
Mr. Barner.
Aye.
Chair votes are. Okay. Employees, this will be employees' safety incentive pay. What do you call it, a Christmas bonus or that? Do we have a motion on that? Get a motion on that.
So movements, Chair.
Got a second.
What's the motion?
That we, uh...
That we, employees' safety incentive pay.
That we grant this to the employees.
And according to, uh, Mr. Manager's information here, it'll be $125 for full-time employees and $65 for part-time employees.
Right, yes sir.
Being paid on December 10th, is that correct?
That's correct, yes sir.
Thank you.
This will be paid through the kickbacks we got back ACCG?
Yes, it's the, yes, sir, it's the claims refund, yes, sir.
How much was that claim refund total?
Uh, I don't know exactly, but it was budgeted based on the, the previous number and they typically go up.
$125.
You ever got a second on the motion?
We got a second, I'll second. You say, okay, we got a second. Any, any discussion on it, anymore? Okay, let's lay it on. Mr. Burson.
Aye.
Mr. Pope.
Aye.
Mr. Tanner.
Aye.
Mr. Barner.
Aye.
Chair votes are. Okay. County managers report.
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Oh, oh, I was gonna ask you about the, uh, Jamestown project.
Yes, sir.
Somebody asked me about that, we, can you give an update on that?
The, the latest that we heard was, uh, email that came from, uh, the Corps of Army Engineers that said they have assigned a project manager to that. Um, and we, honestly, we do not know what that actually means, but we got word in and out to find out. But I think today, the, uh, November the 8th was the day that was the 60-day period that they would review the plan, so we haven't heard anything yet, but it was still with them in Savannah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. All right, commissioners, comment, you got anything?
I got water, what we had on Smith Road with water department, if you have got that worked out?
Based on the consensus was that they would adjust, uh, the consensus of the commission, the, uh, Satilla Water would adjust the conflicts where the cross drains would be and just move those, but leave the water main there in the middle. I believe the, uh, if I'm not mistaken, the, the materials alone was about $190,000.
Yeah, for our part of water.
If, if the commission wanted to pay that, if they still would do it with the, with the county paying just for the material cost. And it was roughly, I think, right at $190,000, just the material cost alone. I believe that's what it was.
We've been needing to make the decision what we're gonna do, don't we?
Yeah, well, if, we can now, if that's, if we wanna move forward with it like it is with the conflicts or whatever the commission decides.
What, what's the recommendation of the engineer on that?
Well, the recommendation was is to move the water line, just so we do not have that problem anymore, you know, with, with, in that location now, um, you got water lines everywhere else under pavement, so it's, it's...
Okay, I think.
One way or the other, so to speak, if you stop doing it and then from this point forward, you know, gradually as you pave roads, then start moving those water lines, or we can just leave it where it is.
Still not clear with the agreement that we had with Satilla Water, I think Gary alluded to it on a previous meeting about whose call is it, can we, when we say, well, you need to move the water line, is that pretty much it or do, there's a gray area in there?
The way their agreement, uh, reads, and the county attorney mentioned this, it says in part or in whole, meaning do we pay, do they pay, you know, it, this, it's really not clear on how the cost of that would be, uh, divided up or who would bear the cost of that, is that correct?
I think the agreement, the fact that the agreement itself was done, it appears that there was some promise on behalf of, you know, the water authority, that they would pay some amount, that's why we entered into the agreement. But it does, that language, in my opinion, you know, it says in whole or in part, so it doesn't say they'll pay half or they'll pay the entirety of the cost of moving the water line. So, um, it, it is, um, perhaps arguably up for interpretation. I think we could take the position that, that was, you know, that was, um, why the agreement was entered into was because Satilla was going to put money, um, and I think his, the historic practice has been that Satilla would pay the entirety of, um, of the amount of moving the lines when necessary with exception of the last project done on Cypress, sorry, is that correct?
That's correct, yep.
Yeah.
So what do you recommend?
Well, we, the, the, I, I would think we could at least offer to pay the material cost, however, that, that's still a $190,000 price tag. Not like it was with Cypress, I think, was like 40 or 50,000.
If we paid 180, they won't have to pay anything, no labor or nothing?
Yeah, they have to put it in.
Yeah.
See, that's what Henry says it'll cost, and I, I spoke with Henry about this and he said it's gonna cost the county 180, 90,000 dollars, plus it gonna cost them that. Yeah, that may do the labor.
Yeah.
And move everything there. He said if both, stand for both of them, it probably better leave it alone, just let it. But they would move all of the things that interfered with the, uh, storm drain or anything, moving the hydrants back, doing some additional, uh, water services so they wouldn't have to go in on the line. He, he did say he would do a lot of that.
So all the years of construction, especially you got, what do you recommend?
Well, I would, I would probably leave it there. I'll go by their old rule, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. You know, it's always water.
They're for breaks for two years now, they'll fix it, water pump will fix it, you know?
They'll fix it, you know, but I know, but then we may have a patch in the road and we don't want that. And I know what y'all looking at and, and I, I'm looking at them saying, standpoint. I don't want the road cut either, but I don't think we will. I, I think the water lines will stay there in, uh, maybe I, if it's just move the, the stuff that...
Needs to be moved.
Needs to be moved. And they said they'd do that, you know, and with no cost to us, but look, if we, we give them, then we got, we got probably $200,000 move water line, water paper.
Scott, did they answer how long that line's been out there?
Uh, from what I understand, it was around 40 years, I believe, I may be wrong, but I, I've heard something different.
I think Gary might know how long it's been. But I can, I may live down to that.
And what's the life, normal life expectancy, I guess?
A year.
How many?
Hundred.
So we still...
That would be VCT5, couldn't it?
Hundred years. So we still good for another, maybe 30, 40?
If we mess with it, then we're gonna have...
Mess with it is right.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we really don't have 100, 100,000 budgeted for that.
No, sir, it would be an additional cost.
I see, leave it alone, fix what we have to fix. They have to set them busted down, avoid the water pump and fix it. I say take care of the conflicts and leave it there, I mean, they don't, they've never hesitated to cut up the street anyway, so...
Yeah.
There's no control over them.
Long as they understand that, you know, I...
Okay.
Does this need to go on next agenda, don't we have to vote on it, or is this good?
Well, the way it stands is they agreed to, to do the, fix the conflicts, so I don't think there's any commission decision that needs...
We don't have to vote on it, just give them a go ahead.
So that way we can move forward and get it paid.
That shit came back on time too, hadn't it?
Yes, yeah.
For expression time.
Correct, yes.
So what's the next step now?
Um, well, we were waiting on the notice proceed to find out how this was all gonna shake out. So what we'll do now is send them the notice proceeding, that way they can get started.
Is all the landowners already satisfied now?
As far as I know, yes, sir.
Okay.
So what about Cactus Street, have we started on that or?
Uh, they're waiting, from what I understand, there's a, uh, there's a delay in the supply chain with the boxes still.
Oh.
And there's about a four, I think about a three or four week lead time there, so they're still kinda waiting for the materials and supplies to get here first.
Yeah. I think they got started clearing, weren't they?
Yes, sir, yeah.
I think they already started.
And that's with all projects, that's not in Cactus, that's about all construction boxes.
Okay.
How about all the road projects?
Uh, let's see, where we are on that is, we've got everything filed and once the, uh, judge signs, then we'll be able to go from there, so, um, that's the last I heard.
How long does it take to build this? How long does it take to build this Miracle League? Okay, that ball?
I think they said it's roughly about a sixty to ninety day project.
Sixty to ninety?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and one of the things, and you, now that you brought that up, one of the things that we're gonna have to be careful, um, careful with is the amount of traffic that's out there, because it's not being built by itself, where no, you know, there's people out there participating in sports, so we're gonna have to really secure that area and, uh, the fencing, priv- you know, privacy, not privacy fencing, but security fencing being put around to keep children from trying to go in there during the construction period.
Then we have to dump trucks, is that, are they gonna mess up a road, you reckon?
Not that I'm aware of, I hope not.
Sure.
I got a couple of comments if we're through with that.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, first of all, I'd like to congratulate everybody that ran for District Three race. Uh, congratulations, Timmy Lucas, he'll be your new commissioner, look forward to new ideas and things that he brings. Uh, I'd also like to say congratulations to Ware County Jager Gators, who are region champs again, and look forward to them being here this weekend for big time, we actually have a lot going on in Weycross and Ware County. So we had, should have some big crowds, and we got the Weycross Exchange Club Agricultural Fair starting tomorrow night. So we should have a lot of people in and out of Ware County, I hope they have a good time, but be safe, so the sheriff doesn't have any issues. Tax commissioners, um, ask Jonathan I to let everybody be reminded that taxes are due next week.
Yeah.
So passing it on.
Anymore? I hear motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Meeting adjourned.